Good evening, councillors and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are on the screen behind me. Also, please, can you ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent? So, the first item of the agenda is the minutes of the meeting, which took place on the 14th of January, been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting?
Very.
Thank you. Have there been any apologies for absence, Fiona?
Thank you, Chairman. I've had apologies from councillors Brian Ellis and Simon Thornton.
Thank you. And whilst on the subject of apologies, I'm sure that we all wish to send our very best wishes to Brian, who is quite poorly at the moment. Thank you. As I am. Excuse me. So have any members declared interest before the meeting?
None received, Chairman.
And do members have any other non-percunory or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare? Have there been any questions received from members of the public?
None, Chairman.
And Elizabeth, are there any updates to government guidance or legislation that the committee should be aware of?
None, thank you, Chairman.
Oh, excuse me. Item six on the agenda, the quarterly enforcement report. Beth, would you introduce that report for us, please?
Thank you, Chairman. The purpose of this report is to provide members with an update on progress for the planning enforcement service for the quarter of October to December last year. This is going to be a very, very short update. If I turn to page seven, under the central area site-specific updates, the Godalming Kebab Centre, you'll note that the last update was that we gave the owners a deadline of the end of January for the ordering and reinstatement of restored tiles. And so nothing's been received, so we're now going to be moved towards prosecution, and we will be communicating this quite clearly to the owners and operators. Moving then to page 11, the cases on hand, you'll see that we're still hovering around the same kind of mark, 227, still comfortably under the 250 cases on hand. And likewise, on page 12, we're continuing to meet our local performance indicator, actioning 70% of our cases within 12-week time period. And that is the end of my presentation. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Members, councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. Obviously, as far as I can tell, nothing to worry about, Beth. But figure two on page 12, I was interested to see that in three quarters, there's just been the steady decline. I was just wondering what the circumstances were that have brought that about, and whether it's likely to continue. Is it a trend?
Thank you, Chairman. Short answer is no, I don't think it's likely to continue. Christmas compounded that figure. Unfortunately, there was an extended office closure, which meant that we were unable to close as many as we might have liked. And that said, I have had sight of our performance for this year to date, and I'm confident that you'll see an improvement come the next quarterly reports. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I believe the performance indicator has now been moved in the right direction, to 85%. Is that correct? Yes. I look forward to very good performance figures in the future. Thank you.
Councillor Thompson.
Yes, thank you. I've been concerned about the kebab centre tiles for, I don't know how many years now. I had a look on my way, and there is a huge piece of wood now actually holding up one side, it looks like one whole side of the tiled wall, because that was the oldest of old dairy, which I remember when I first came to Godalming was, I used to pop in there and pick up cheese and cream and all the rest of it. And it actually was a fully functioning dairy, which is why the tiles are really part of the fabric and history of the town. So I sincerely hope that we keep a very close eye on this, because it's utterly precarious now.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, on the issue of health, the health and safety aspect, I did raise this with the council's building control service as dangerous structure, potentially dangerous structure. They're satisfied at the moment that it doesn't pose an immediate threat, but they said that keep an eye on it. Thank you, Chairman.
Are there any other questions, members?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a point of clarification, please. About the kebab centre, page seven, it says December 2014, and beneath it, it says January 2014. Should it be 15? Good, thank you.
Councillor Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I note that we do, from time to time, receive information about prosecutions that are made against fraudulent benefit claimants. Do you think we might have the same kind of information to keep us up to date on how these prosecutions proceed? I'm very keen that the prosecutions should proceed as fast as may be possible.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the prosecutions will be included in the updates in the normal way. When there is a prosecution ongoing, we do have a section for prosecutions, so we'll be sure to keep that updated as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Morgan.
Can I just come back on that, Madam Chairman? I do appreciate the committee has kept well up to date, but I think in other areas, we do issue some sort of press communications about prosecutions, and I would like to see us able to do that on planning issues, too.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I think that's something that we can actually looking to do in. I'll raise it with the Boris Alister.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or remarks? So, the, thank you, members, the recommendation is set out on the first page of the agenda that the enforcement report be noted. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item seven, quarterly appeals report. Barry, if you'd like to introduce that for us, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman. If I take you to page 15, we have our first appeal at land to the rear of Step Cottage, Church Lane, Whitely. This was an application refused under delegated powers for the erection of a dwelling with access off Petworth Road. The main issues here were whether it was inappropriate development in the Green Belt, whether the proposed development would preserve or enhance the character of the pyramids of Whitely Conservation Area, and the effect of the proposed development on the setting of the adjacent listed building, and also whether a financial contribution to provide local infrastructure is or was necessary. First of all, the inspector concluded that the proposed development would constitute limited infilling with the village, and as such would not be inappropriate development within the Green Belt. However, he did consider that the proposal would have a detrimental impact on the character and appearance of Whitely Conservation Area, and would significantly alter the relationship between the site and Step Cottage, and therefore would have a detrimental impact on the setting of the listed building. The inspector did note that there was a small benefit arising from provision of a single dwelling in terms of meeting local need, but that was limited. So on balance, the inspector agreed with the authority and dismissed the appeal. Next, on page 16, we have an appeal at Roke Cottage, Roke Lane, Whitely. This was refused under delegated powers, and this was a lawful development certificate under section 192 of the Act for the erection of extensions. The local authority considered that the application should be assessed under schedule to part one, class B, of the Town and Country Planning General Committee Development Order 1995. The inspector decided that that wasn't the case, it should just be classes A and C. And as such, he allowed the appeal for the certificate of authoreness for the erection of the extension. So that was a 1-1 draw between Waverley and the inspector. Thank you very much.
Members, do you have any questions or comments to make? So, thank you. The recommendation is set out on the first page of the agenda that the appeals report be noted. Is that agreed? Thank you. Now we move on to applications for planning permission. We've already had a site visit in relation to application A1, and in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of our consideration of the other applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday, the 9th of March 2015, at a time to be agreed. So moving on to the planning applications, the first application is WA 20141435, erection of a two-storey extension and alterations following demolition of existing lean-to as amended by plans received on the 9th of December 2014 at number one River House Cottage's, the Green Elstead, GU86DA. Members will have noticed from the update report that officers are now recommending that this application is deferred. Barry, would you like to explain to the committee the reason for this revised recommendation?
Thank you, Chairman. Yesterday, the authority received from a third party, a council's opinion with regards to the assessment of the impact of the proposal on the listed building. Now, officers would like to defer the application to allow that council's opinion to be assessed by our legal team, and then we will bring the application back to you, I suspect, in March, when we're certain that everything is all acceptable. Thank you.
Members, the recommendation from officers is that this application be deferred. Thank you, Barry, sorry, to allow this new information to be assessed. Is the committee in agreement with the recommendation to defer?
In agreement.
Thank you. So moving on to the next application, item A2, WA 20142241, application under section 73A to vary condition one, WA 2014008, approved plan numbers, to allow roof terraces above garages to plots 68 and 69 at Worth House and Anvil Park, Catasall Lane, Godalming, GU7, 1MP. So Barry, you're going to present this for us, are you?
Yes, I'm afraid you're going to hear a lot from my voice this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, this item is subject to public speaking. Oh, sorry, Barry first, I beg your pardon.
Thank you very much. So this is an application under section 73A to vary condition one of the approved plans to allow roof terraces above the garages at plots 68, 69, Worth House, Anvil Park, Catasall Lane, Godalming. Members will be familiar with the site, we discussed this at length in a committee maybe some 18 months ago, for the development of what was Worth House to 147 dwellings. Now, I'm afraid this location plan doesn't show all 147 dwellings, because at the time the plan was undertaken by ordinate survey, not all were built. But I'm indicating the full length of the site now, and the plots of interest are in the corner here. This block plan isn't tremendously clear because of the scanning, but it's in this corner here, we have the plots under consideration. So I can show you on this site, this plan which is clearer, it's in this corner here. And these are the dwellings in question. So the application is for these areas here over the garages to be retained and used as terraces. Members may recall, when this came to planning committee some time in 2013, that the applicants had amended the scheme so as not to include terraces on these plots, 68 and 69. A number of the plots, that, these plots here and the continuation round here, the second plan isn't clear enough to show, all have the same configuration. But the applicants came in to change these plots here to take away the terraces, terraces remain here, and the terrace is in situ here, although it shouldn't be. So there are some terraces along, they've been removed here, this is the offending property or properties with terraces that shouldn't be there. Properties again. So these are the roof terraces serving those dwellings. This is a view of those roof terraces from across in Blackburn Way. The distance between the terraces here and here is some 35 to 40 metres. What is important to remind members, and you all know that this application is not to do with any of the 147 dwellings, they have permission, they are erected, it is purely relating to these roof terraces. Here we have some proposed ground floor plans, and the first floor plans showing those roof terraces either side, and here we have the proposed floor plans for the second floor plans. This application doesn't relate to the balconies, again, only the terraces either side. Now, looking at the matters of principle, technical judgment, planning history and differences with previous proposal, this application, members will note from their committee papers on page 37, was refused under WA 20131653, that refusal was a technical refusal because there was a failure to sign a legal agreement, which meant affordable housing wasn't secured and the plate pitches weren't secured, so that was a technical reason. This application follows on from that and seeks to address those issues. Going on to matters of judgment, impact on visual amenity, there is little impact on the visual amenity, the flat roof garage is there, it's purely the use of it. So from a visual point of view, officers consider there's no impact. And then moving on to impact on residential amenity, when this application came in in 2012, officers were concerned that there could be some overlooking from these plots to Blackburn Way. However, having now seen the properties being built, and having to be able to appreciate the distance between the properties, and given that there's balconies already, officers now consider that there wouldn't be a significant impact on residential amenity compared to what's already there with the balconies. So as such, the recommendation is, I've lost my update sheet, here we are. On the update sheet, sorry, we have a number of amendments to conditions. As this is a section 73A application, the conditions that were imposed on the 2012 scheme follow across. However, some of those conditions have been discharged, so no longer need to follow across. So what we have is conditions 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38 are of the original 2012 permission, and need to be followed across to ensure they are discharged. We've had two letters of support from the occupants of 68 and 69. And then we have the revised recommendation is that having regard to the environmental information contained within this application and previous applications, the environmental statement and responses to it submitted with planning permission 20121078, together with the approved mitigation package, subject to the applicant completing a deed of variation to the legal agreements associated with WA 20121078, permission be granted, subject to conditions in the main agenda and additional conditions in this update sheet. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Barry. And so this item is subject to public speaking, and I understand the procedure has been explained. Can I invite the objector, Miss West, to speak? Good evening, Miss West. You have three minutes from when you start speaking.
The application for roof terraces on plots 68 and 69 were not allowed, and no amendment to that decision applied for until now. This is indicative of the arrogant attitudes towards Waverley and the planning process, that Linden Homes knowingly continued to build the houses with terraces after being refused permission, have sold them, and are only now applying to this committee to overturn their previous decision. I alerted planning enforcement to the issue in September 2014, having visited the Riverside Sales Office and been told by a very bullish Linden Homes sales manager that these particular plots were sold with roof terraces. It seems at that point Linden Homes fobbed planning enforcement off, suggesting that workmen were merely using the roof area for ease of access to the building. It is a fact that the company have built the terraces on plots 68 and 69 in exactly the same way as on the other properties which fully face the Lammerslands. They've installed double doors onto the terrace, outside lights, and glass balcony fronts to make the most of the view. Clearly, they never intended to comply with the restriction, perhaps they hoped no one would notice. As originally raised with this committee, these houses are built on an elevator position in relation to Blackburn Way. We are looked down on in our gardens and on the private riverbank by the homes along the river's edge, all of which have balconies. Our one small victory was not to have these roof terraces built to overlook our properties, and yet Linden Homes have seemed fit to build them. Roof terraces are large, sociable areas designed for use by more than just a few people. What has changed to make this allowable? Photos submitted to support this requested amendment conveniently show the one remaining tree and leaf offering some small screening from the properties opposite. New trees, sparsely planted, will in some year's time provide but scant screening. The terraces would enable significant social gatherings to take place at an elevation which could only be intrusive, causing unacceptable loss of privacy, further noise and light pollution. We are concerned that Linden Homes have cynically manipulated the planning process by building these terraces without permission, choosing only now for that permission when they are built and newly occupied. I wonder if a single householder had behaved thus, what enforcement action might have been taken against them? Could one speculate there are different rules for large developers? We implore the committee to uphold their previous decision and to refuse this application since nothing has changed, and thereby restore some faith and trust in the planning and development process which Linden Homes clearly hold in contempt.
Thank you, Miss West. And we have no other speaker on this item, so it's over to you, members. Councillor Martin.
Thank you. Could I just please seek a clarification? The original permission given excluded these two properties, and you talked about a technical refusal at some point, but I don't think that has any particular bearing. Was this considered in the way that we're considering it now, at the time of the original application?
The amendment, I'm having to recall, I think the amendment was made by the applicants, hearing concerns of residents, and of officers and members raised the concern, I don't think it was done here in committee, but members did raise concern about the overlooking. But all they're seeking permission for is to use those spaces, not to build them. The building of them is secured, yes, so it's purely...
I do understand the building of them, I'm solely concerned with the roof terraces. I understand, I mean, when you look at the position of these houses, they do look towards Blackburn Way in a way that the others don't. So were these two houses discussed in relation to the roof terraces when the original planning permission was given? And was it a particular decision to exclude these, or what were the circumstances? I cannot remember, I'm not sure I was around for that particular discussion.
It was a particular decision to exclude plots 68 and 69 from having roof terraces because of this position in relation to Blackburn Way. They've come in, reapplied, and officers have reassessed the distance and had a look, and now have arrived at a different conclusion. The balconies you see on front, the Juliet balconies, have been accepted all the time, it's just those terraces. Thank you.
Councillor Cable.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I in fact did go and have a look at this today, and I was quite surprised at how far away Blackburn Way was. The other thing is that the other houses either side, they also have a reasonable view of the houses opposite, but they have got terraces that are allowed. So although I have sympathy with what Miss West was saying, I do think it's a little unfair maybe if these were excluded. Thank you.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you. I was wondering if officers can confirm, on page 36, the proposed floor plans effectively, and indeed the pictures that we've seen, show the side patio doors going out onto the terrace. Are those patio doors also part of this application, or were those side patio doors always going to be there? Because actually, we're not just talking about the use of the roof terrace, I'm assuming if the roof had never originally been intended to be a roof terrace, then there would never have been a door to access it, or am I wrong?
There should be windows either side, so you're technically dealing with the door, but there's nothing stopping the applicants, and they are living in the property, they have their rights, their PD rights, they can change those doors, those windows to doors, they just can't use the space outside of the doors.
Thank you, Chairman. I've looked at this very carefully, and the conclusion I come to is that upon receipt of an application, the officers have simply changed their minds. However, I don't really find the reasons for changing their minds frightfully convincing. It seems to me that the original objection to this, that of the overlooking aspect, is still valid, and I'm not persuaded that one should have an alternative view. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Lee, did you put your hand up? Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. Like councillor Cable, I went round the site this afternoon as well, and was quite surprised at the uniformity of these terraces on top of the garages, to the right round that particular arc of development. And so my view, I came to the view that the ability to sort of overlook or be overlooked was pretty well the same for these particular plots as it was for another three, four plots to the side. And when we look at the houses that are further round, that don't actually have garages with the terraces on there, they have well-developed balconies actually above the door and front windows, that the sort of visibility aspect is exactly the same for them. Now, it's true that at this time of year, leaves are very sparse, and I feel that, you know, as the year develops and trees develop their leaves, and there should be significant planting to further ameliorate the sort of openness that there is. But I find it hard to single out these two particular properties from the rest in the immediate vicinity. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I listened to the argument about the difference between the proposed terraces and the ones already existing on the other houses, and having visited the site myself, I can understand that. But what does concern me is the cumulative effect, because that will be the case, there are two more terraces overlooking Blackburn Way. The other thing that does concern me is the argument that this is an amenity space that will only be of secondary use because there's a back garden. But the fact that there's French windows leading out from the principal living room onto a considerable space with a view, makes me think that to all intents and purposes, the amenity value of that will be seen to be very amenable, very easy to use, and will become used considerably more than a back garden. That's my best guess on that one, and it is, of course, a matter of judgment. And it is about where you draw the line. And my, although it is a very close decision, I think with the distance notwithstanding, it is the noise and the echoing nature of the noise in that particular part of where the river bends, the noise does carry considerably across there, and it is, you know, two terraces that could be very well used for summer months and, you know, into the spring and the autumn. know, into the spring and the autumn. And I just think it is, because of its elevated position compared to Blackburn Way, I think it does impinge on the amenity of residents. And whilst I'd be interested to hear what colleagues have to say, my instinct is that this is just cumulatively too much.
Thank you, councillor Reynolds.
Thank you, chairman. I'll start off by saying I do have sympathy with both parties, really, the occupants of the houses who've bought them on the assumption that they were going to be provided with terraces, and obviously people in Blackburn Way who had every expectation that they wouldn't have terraces. But in terms of overlooking, I can't really see that there's a massive issue here, because, you know, these houses both have two sets of balconies, and indeed three big sets of windows, all sharing the same view. So adding a couple of terraces on the side really is not really increasing the overlooking, unless you suddenly decide to get an extra 40 people in and all look at the same time. But, you know, you're not really adding to the overlooking, you know, the house is already overlooked, and as the officers have said, it is some separation distance of 45 metres. I mean, a lot of us live in houses, or used to live in houses, which, you know, are opposite sides of the road, and actually the distance between the overlooking or between the houses is a much shorter distance. So I'm not so much concerned about that. The noise element that councillor Thompson mentioned potentially could be something of concern, but then equally, it would be of concern to some of the other houses which aren't very far away and are provided with terraces. And I think one would just have to really hope that when people buy houses and live in this close proximity, that if they are using outdoor spaces, they do so in a neighbourly fashion. So I'm not, I think the officers have done a good report. I mean, there is a separate issue about how these came to be on the houses that should be dealt with perhaps separately, but we are where we are, and I think I'm broadly minded to agree with the officers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin.
Thank you. I think councillor Reynolds has summed it up very well. I mean, I think the fact that this is a late application and the nature of the way in which this has been got to is not a planning concern for us. We have here a planning application which we have to just consider as we would any other planning application. I have to say that if you took the river away and put a road and an embankment the other side with a two-storey house, I mean, the base of a two-storey house the other side of the road with an embankment wouldn't make much difference to the position of the terrace in this case at ground level. And we do have lots of situations where I think the level of overlooking is not worse, in many cases considerably worse than we've got here. I would understand entirely, if I were a resident of Blackburn Way, I wouldn't be very happy about it. But on the other hand, I think we have to test the reasonableness against the reasonableness of overlooking and compare that to other situations around the town. And I think it's a finely judged thing, I think, for me, but I think I'm inclined to go with the officers in this way that councillor Reynolds has just described. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Taylor Smith.
I'm still conjuring with councillor Martin's view of us imagining the river wasn't there, but you're a very imaginative man. I don't really like retrospective applications, and I can see they irritate, in fact, they irritate me, in fact, I can see they irritate objectors as well, because it's not what they thought was being built. And clearly, the developer here has cracked on and built it in the way they have, thinking that they can deal with it afterwards rather than getting approval first, and that's irritating. That said, the design seems fine and consistent with what else is there. Looking at the amenity, I can see the amenity improvement for the residents living in those two houses would be great in terms of having an extra outdoor space overlooking the river. And looking at it, I think the amenity disbenefit for those in Blackburn Way, given this degree and the space of separation, would not be much, if anything. I have to ask myself if we didn't grant it, and we then moved on to Beth and the enforcement of this, whether that would be a good use of public time and money enforcing against this if we weren't to grant it tonight, and I think probably not.
Thank you. councillor Williams, did you? Yes, you did.
This is my ward, and I'd just like to apologize that my co-ward member, Ross Wellan, can't be here today. He wished to make a statement. I fully support what the objectors have said, and I have read their letters, and I hope other members of the committee have as well. It is always irking when a developer comes back for a second bite at the cherry, and this is certainly what has happened here. I think I must say that if we turn this down today, I would have the greatest of sympathy for the purchasers of these properties, but I would say that recourse would be under the Consumer Protection Regulations Act 2008 for what one would probably call a mis-selling. However, that is another point. I think we've got to look at this from the guidance policy which has been issued. Is this a trivial breach, which causes no material harm or adverse impact on the surrounding area? Well, I would say no. I don't think a deliberate breach is a trivial breach, and you can't argue that. Also got to look at whether this can be dealt with by conditions. I don't actually think it could be, but again, that's a question which the committee must answer. The other thing I would make very plain is that both myself and Ross have had several hours of discussions with Linden Homes when this matter first came up, several hours of discussions with our residents, and I had thought that we had come to a reasonable agreement. Obviously, that is totally wrong. So I would certainly say that the overlooking and the privacy are material considerations. We may have different views on how those work. There is overlooking. It's perfectly obvious there is overlooking. And I think in general terms, perhaps, Linden Homes haven't been the best developer around. Certainly, on the last occasion I attended the site with our enforcement team, the manager didn't even realise he had to plant trees. And I think that gives you an idea of the problems we have all had. So I've listened very carefully to what everybody has said, and I am still of the opinion, and I will be voting against this.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr Morgan.
I would like to make one comment, if I may, chairman, and that is that a great deal of reference has been made to the other properties in the neighbourhood having similar benefit from a balcony area. I'm not convinced that because something unwise has been permitted in the past, we should continue with that and make further unwise decisions. I'm more persuaded, I think, that there is a loss of amenity here, and that we should not extend that loss any further. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Wilson.
Thank you, madam chairman. I'm very much in agreement with councillors Morgan and Williams. There has been a change in condition here. I think the developer and the purchasers are using Salamanlike tactics. Where will this stop?
I tend to agree, I must say. I remember making the decision not to have those balconies. I remember walking across to the other side of the river and looking back and deliberating quite thoroughly about it all. And we did make the decision that these two properties should not have the benefit of roof terraces. I can't see that anything's changed since then. I'm tending to think that I may not be agreeing with the officers on this one, but are there any other comments or questions? Mr Martin.
The difficulty that I have with anything other than supporting the officer's recommendation is that if this was to be refused, I'm not entirely sure on what grounds it would be refused on, and whatever those grounds are, I'm not sure that there are any grounds that would be upheld at an appeal. I'm absolutely confident that a planning inspector would allow this, and on that basis, that has to form material, that is material consideration, and on that basis, and pretty much that basis alone, reluctantly, I will be supporting the officers.
councillor Cable.
Thank you, chairman. It was just to say that I, like you, took the opposite view originally. What has changed my mind is actually going there today and actually seeing the distance between this particular house and Blackburn Way was much greater than I had realised when we actually looked at the plans. And also the fact, as I've said already, whether it's the right way to approach these things or not. If I'd known originally that the other houses either side were going to have almost similar views of Blackburn Way, then I might have altered my opinion originally. So what's changed for me is actually seeing those buildings built rather than on a piece of paper. Thank you.
Yes, that's a very good point, isn't it? councillor Morgan.
Thank you, chairman. I just wanted to comment, I get very concerned about members who feel that we should not make a decision that could possibly be altered by an appeal inspector. It's my view that this is a matter of judgment, as the officers have said quite clearly, this is a matter of judgment, and it's for us to exercise our judgment and not second-guess what the odd inspector might say. They're not consistent, they have their peculiarities, as indeed do we, but it's a matter for us to judge and not to second-guess somebody else's judgment.
councillor Martin.
Thank you. I've heard councillor Morgan express that view before, and I disagree with him. I think the distance that Barry mentioned was 35 metres from across the river, from this house to the houses in Blackburn Way. It swings on whether we feel that is a sufficient distance. 35 metres is quite a substantial distance, and I think an appeal inspector would agree that 35 metres was a reasonable distance and therefore would allow this. I don't like the way in which this application has been presented. I don't like people breaking conditions of original applications. However, it's perfectly lawful, whether we like it or not, to do this and then come in afterwards. I don't approve of that, I don't like it, but that's nothing to do with the application that's before us. We have to look at it in isolation and say, is this reasonable or not? And I, it's not, I don't think it's a very clear cut in my mind, but my judgment is that 35 metres is sufficient.
Thank you very much, members. Now, have we had a full enough debate on this matter? Is there anybody else who has something burning they wish to say, or any new view to bring to the debate? So we now need to move to the recommendation, and the revised recommendation is that having regard to the environmental information contained within this application and previous applications, the environmental statement and response to it submitted with planning permission WA 2012 and 1078, together with the approved mitigation package, and subject to the applicant completing a deed of variation to the legal agreements associated with WA 2012 1078, permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 32 set out on pages 47 to 53, and informatives 1 to 17 on pages 53 to 55 of the agenda, and the additional conditions 33 to 38 set out in the update report. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
Seven in favour.
And those against?
Four against.
And abstaining?
One abstention.
Thank you, members. Permission is granted. Moving on to the last application, item B1 WA 20142173, change of use of the first and second floor from office use to four residential flats, together with a continued use of the ground floor for purposes of Class B1 Office at 128 to 130, High Street, Godoming, GU7 1AB, as amended by plans received on the 19th of December 2014. councillor Taylor Smith.
Thank you. Before we consider the item, may I just make a brief comment? The applicant in this case made a complaint about me to the standards officer concerning his previous application on this on 2013. That was entirely fanciful, that complaint. It was investigated by an external lawyer, who found nothing to, no question of any influence or wrongdoing, whatever, of my behaviour. Therefore, I consider this to be entirely appropriate for me to sit on this decision.
Is that, we agree with that? Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Taylor Smith. Okay. So... It's Barry, not Peter, isn't it? Would you like to introduce the application, please?
Thank you very much, chairman. So this application is for the change of use of the first and second floor from office use to four residential flats. Members will know the site as the old post office at the top of the High Street, as indicated in the location plan in front of us. Now, the application is proposed to create three one-bed flat and one two-bed flat with three car parking spaces in the car park, and something I'm going to regret saying to this committee is a loss of 248 square metres of office space, but the retention of 149 square metres of office space. I'm sure we should come back to that in deliberations later on. So there we have the existing basement floor plan and the proposed basement floor plan. The proposed basement plan has room in for a gymnasium, a laundry room, and store rooms to be used in conjunction with the proposed residential units on the first and second floor. Here we have the existing ground floor plan currently laid out for office accommodation, and then we have the proposed ground floor showing accommodation for two offices split. So office number two in this location and office number one here. Existing first and second floor plans used currently, or not used, but lawful use as office accommodation. Then we have the proposed first floor, flat one. Councillor Lee will note that we've got the furniture in, so we can understand that there is, they are of good size. They are 63 square metres on flat one and flat two of nearly 80 square metres, so they are of a reasonable size. Then we have flat three and flat four in the roof, flat three being around 60 square metres and flat four being around 47 square metres. Here we have the proposed block plan showing the provision of the three spaces to the rear and space for bin stores. Now, there is very little amenity space associated with the proposal, however, the site is in close proximity to Lammis Lands, to the Burry Field, and to the Philip's, Jack Philip, what's the, Memorial Grant, sorry. Now, looking at those determining issues, on our left, we have loss of commercial land considerations. Now, as I've already alluded to, there is a loss of office accommodation of some 200 square metres. Now, members may recall that this application came to the authority some time ago, maybe a year ago, and officers at that point refused the application of delegated powers, one of the reasons being the loss of that office accommodation and the failure of the applicant to market the accommodation at favourable terms for a sufficient period of time. The site has now been marketed, it's come to our valuations as states officer, and they are now happy that it's been marketed in a way that demonstrates the site is no longer required for its employment purposes. Next, impact on vital- Next, impact on vitality and viability of the town centre and central shopping area. Now, whilst there is a loss of some office accommodation, the framework is clear that a residential use is acceptable in this type of location because it can add to the vitality and vibrance of a town centre in hours outside of your usual business hours. So it does tick the box in that way. Looking at housing supply, as we know, we don't have a five-year housing land supply. We come in at around 3.8 years, and that shortfall is a significant consideration in favour of the application. Looking at parking and highway considerations, the application proposes three car parking spaces. The site is well located in terms of accessibility to the train, its public transport, and officers consider that in a site such as this, it is good to have those three car parking spaces. Now, matters of judgment. Impact on the character and appearance of the conservation area, impact on a listed building, and impact on the setting of adjacent listed buildings. This site is a listed building, Grade 2, it's in the conservation area, and there are numerous listed buildings all around. This application does involve some minor alterations to the listed building fabric. They've been dealt with under a listed building application, which is pending in the office. And they are, it is just for closing down the existing openings and opening up of previous openings. So there's no major interaction with the fabric of the listed building. And it's gone through the Historic Building Officer of the council, and their expert opinion is that it does preserve the character of the conservation area, it preserves the character of the listed building, and doesn't impact negatively on the setting of adjacent listed buildings. On to impact on visual amenity. The proposal, in officers' opinion, giving the very little impact on the fabric of the building would have a little impact on visual amenity, although hopefully it would bring some vibrance to that area if approved. Impact on residential amenity, this site is sufficiently distant from neighbouring properties, so it's not to pose impact on residential amenity. Now, looking at amenity space, as already suggested, this site is some distant, it doesn't have its own amenity space or sufficient amount of it, but it's in close proximity to amenity space within Godoming. If I now take you to the update sheet, page four, amendments to the report. The recommendation on page 57 refers to the need to complete a unilateral undertaking. Members will be aware that the need for this undertaking dropped away in 28th November 2014, so that is an error and shall now be removed. Response from consultees, we still have had no response from Thames Water. And then we have amendment to condition number seven on page 81 of the agenda, and that's the ground floor of the premises should not be used for any purpose except B1 office use, as defined in Class B of the Town and Country Planning Use Classes Order 1987, as amended, and should not be used for any other purpose, including any other use within Class B of the schedule to that order, or any provision equivalent to the class in any statutory instrument revoking and reenacting that order. The reason being, the retention of B1 business use within the town centre is in accordance with policies TC1, TC3, and IC1 of the local plan. So the revised recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to the conditions in the main agenda and the revised condition contained in this update report. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Barry. Members, over to you. I think it's councillor Reynolds first.
Thank you, chairman. Well, I do have concerns about this, not least over the alleged marketing of the property since 2000. As I understand it, the previous tenant has been paying the rent on that property for some period of time. And I would imagine that the property hasn't been terribly well marketed since 2000 because there was no need to, because there was a decent rent being received by the owner until probably that rental period is coming to an end shortly or something like that. And perhaps now this is why this is coming up. But in terms of the saying that there's no interest in this building, I know of somebody, who's an acquaintance of mine, who is interested in this building, who is interested in purchasing this building and retaining it as an office. So to say that that's not the case is certainly incorrect. So that really is my major concern. I don't think the marketing has potentially been properly done, and the fact that there is interest from somebody to keep it as an office, to say that there's no interest in retaining it as office use, I think is disingenuous. My other concern is actually the lack of parking. I mean, we have changed our parking guidance happily, which I was very pleased to see. We should expect four car parking places, this has only got three. There's no point in really changing our guidance if we don't stick to it. So I think it should have four car parking spaces if it's to remain flats, but I still think it should remain office space, and there is a demand and a buyer out there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor Smith. Did you indicate, yes, you did.
I did, thank you. I, like many of you, am extremely protective about Godoming, Godoming High Street in particular, because that's one of the things we like living in this area for, is having such a nice, vibrant, pretty attractive high street in our local town. And to me, this is one of the most attractive buildings in that high street. And it is a great shame to me that it's sat empty for so long. And I know it has sat empty because it's been inadequately marketed. In the term, in the trade is what's called as being over rented, because it was sublet to a company, and they were paying so much rent, and they had no need for it and couldn't let it on. And it's been utterly inadequately marketed. I think our state, councillor state evaluation officer acknowledges that actually it's not been marketed for very long on page 68. It's only really been properly marketed since March 2014. I would be most concerned about this building going over to partial residential use. I think there's been a failure to market it, and for that reason, I think we need to reject it. Previously, on an application to do with a conversion to residential in relation to retail space on Church Street, we as a committee last year took the view that that had been inadequately marketed, and it was really a function of the applicant refusal to, in relation to their rent expectations, and to drop those to a realistic level meant that they would get a far better return, the applicant, by conversion to residential, and that's why they were pushing it. Here's another instance. If the applicant was prepared to actually look at rental offers on this and for sale offers on this, he would be able to, I think through marketing, be able to find a tenant for this. But the refusal to drop the rent means you won't find a tenant, which unsurprisingly means you don't find a tenant immediately, which is why you come back to this committee asking for a conversion to a more lucrative use of residential. I'm very concerned about the application. The ground floor retention of offices, I would simply make that unviable as an office. Actually, as a 4,000 square foot unit, as offices, it's lettable. And I would resist, and I would certainly be voting against the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Any other questions, remarks? councillor Thompson.
Thank you. Leaving to one side the marketing issue. Going back to the amount of space, because if we look at the flats, they have to function within the curtilage of that property, and there's a lot to go on. And I'd need some clarification on the boring topic of bins. Because being the wall councillor for the High Street for a quite complex mix of residential accommodation over, under, next to commercial premises, we have fun with bins. And from the report, I can see that there are going to be recycling bins and kitchen waste bins that will be supplied by Waverley and emptied in the normal fashion. And I need clarification on the four-wheeled black bin that has been recommended, that I presume all four flats therefore put their black bin waste into one larger wheeled receptacle rather than having four separate black bins. That's my reading of the binage, should we say. But that does not explain to me how future tenants of the office premises will dispose of their waste, whether the office waste will be separate, and how it will be stored in the area behind. Because I can't see how that's going to work with three parking spaces. And I just need some guidance on where they're all going to fit in.
Thank you, chairman. Condition six relates to what we see on the screen now. But condition six can be widened for a scheme to be presented to the authority that includes details of bin storage for both the office accommodation and the residential accommodation, and for that space to be protected for those uses. Because we do have this green area on behind me for amenity space. But of course, that's not amenity space. Nobody's going to be sitting out there drying clothes or whatnot, because you're so close to the parking spaces anyway. So that space could be used for the storage of waste. Or alternatively, there is the area in the basement that could be used for the storage of the residential waste and the outside space used for storage of the office accommodation. But we could certainly put a condition together, asking for those details to come in and to be approved, and for the scheme to be carried out in accordance with those details.
Yes, councillor Thompson.
Thank you. And I'm aware that you can apply conditions, but what you can't do is elasticate the premises. And I'm not convinced, even with using amenity space or using basement space, I'd need to be convinced that there's actually enough square footage to be able to accommodate and manoeuvre all the required bins for any potential tenants and residents. We are already not covering the required parking, and we're not covering enough space for one cycle per unit either. And this leads me to worry greatly, because I mean, I know that property extremely well. I actually used to live years ago over the red line opposite, so I know exactly how difficult that little corner is. And to have three cars coming in and out of there, bins emptied, and all the rest of it, I just think that that is too much going on in too small a space in that particular part of the High Street. Going back to the other element of it, which is whether or not this office space is required by, you know, Godoming, as it were, I'm mindful of comments that have already been made. And I would also observe that in my view, that is a very viable area and a very viable building for offices because of where it is. It is in close proximity to car parks, three of them within absolute spitting distance, and a station which is two minutes' walk away. So the value of having flexible office space in that particular corner of the town is valuable indeed. It's, you know, we must all remember that the Salvation Army building in Mint Street was sold to an office development, it wasn't sold for residential. They actually turned that into a small office development. And it's used as offices and is very successful, just around, just literally opposite the car park. So there is a need for small units. And if you ask landlords of larger office units, what they are finding now is that they need to divide up larger offices and rent them out to smaller businesses and people who are just growing their business from home into their first office. So it does provide a valuable, cheaper alternative for new businesses to grow. And I think that should not be overlooked. Vibrancy, yes, residential units over commercial units and shops in the High Street do provide activity and presence of, you know, beating hearts outside of normal shopping hours. But for that particular part of the High Street, it's opposite a pub. It's got another pub diagonally across from it. Round the back, you have, I think it is eight flats. Plus, you've got three new flats over the new takeaway Domino's, the Gout Godoming Cafe, which admittedly is closed in the evenings. You then have the Chinese takeaway, the Chinese restaurant that provides takeaway. You have the Pizza Express Domino's, plus the Richmond Pub, all in that little tiny sort of tapering end of the High Street that leads right out onto the main road and thoroughfare station approach. And you've got Church Street with a pub in it, and you've got the Rosen Crown, which is literally opposite. So that top end of the town, if you're looking for vibrancy, you have to look at the local context. And I know it says that in the MPPF, but when you look at it locally, that little bit of the town is really buzzing and busy. And so I think it's a shame not to give that property the best shot it can have at being offices before we look to residential. And I do know, I do sort of take note that we do need affordable units for people to buy or rent. You know, that's a real trouble with affordable cost accommodation in the town. So I'm not ignoring that. But on balance, I think the opportunity to provide employment premises at a reasonable cost in the right part of town, for me, outweighs the need for us to provide low-cost accommodation in that particular part of town.
Thank you, councillor Cable.
Thank you, chairman. I mean, I must admit with this that I don't like the loss of commercial premises one bit. I'm also very concerned when I hear that there may be a buyer, that the rents being charged are really too high ever for it to be marketed. There's numerous things here that I think I want far more information regarding this application. And at the moment, I do not feel happy about making my mind up. I'm really saying, I want, I think it should be deferred until we get far more information about exactly what has going on, whether the rent being charged was realistic, and whether it has genuinely been marketed for sufficiently long. Whether we should refuse and do it the other way, I don't know, but that's my feelings.
Thank you, councillor Martin.
Thank you, madam chairman. I've got a long history in this chamber of opposing the loss of commercial space and of opposing conversion of commercial space into residential properties. And I will continue to so do. I feel that there's a conflict on page 62, under the consultations. The council's estates and valuations manager, the first sentence considers that the agent has taken all reasonable steps to market the premises. And then the second sentence is, note that the premises have only been on the market since March 2014, and do not believe that 10 months is sufficient time to establish if there's any demand for the property. Those two sentences, to me, seem to conflict. I have to say, I would prefer that this would stay as commercial space, and I want to be absolutely convinced that there is no possibility of this building being used for commercial premises before I come into any agreement that it should be residential. Therefore, I shall be opposing the recommendation.
councillor Lee.
Thank you, madam chairman. Just a few thoughts. I never particularly like empty, unused buildings. And I felt that the mix of residential and still have some offices was quite an ingenious approach. But in respect of marketing, councillor councillor Taylor Smith has very well articulated the fact that marketing can be manipulated, depending on the ultimate objective of the owner. And I've become increasingly aware of these various techniques of manipulation during these last few years I've been on this particular committee. So I felt that in the report, apart from this aspect of eight months rather than sort of 12 months, I think that was right, wasn't it, Tom? I still don't think, you know, another two months is going to make any difference. I'm sure that the agent did market fully. It's just whether any responses that came back, and we've no idea how many responses came back. We therefore, you know, don't know whether there was a big take-up because of all the conditions that the owner was imposing or not. Now, the other aspect, of course, comes back to parking. Having looked at that space and the way it's laid out, for me, that's clearly an area on a piece of paper, oh, we can divide it into three, and that's three parking spaces. I cannot conceive how those can be usefully used all the time. Even getting in through those swinging gates would prove problematical, I think, for a number of a number of vehicles. And it is just not realistic to think this three parking space is there for permanent use. The other aspect is, and yes, I am delighted that there's a bedroom furniture in the bedrooms, and we will notice that although there are three one-bedroom flats, each of those one-bedroom flats has double beds in there. So there is no way can we guarantee that there will be one person in each of those one-bedroom places. So again, although the positioning is wonderful for buses, if you're going to use buses, wonderful for walking to shopping amenity, wonderful for getting down to the station, all of us these days have a need, or we feel we have a need, for a vehicle. Therefore, to think that, you know, we could have five, six people, each with a vehicle, there is just no way can the projected parking accommodate those people, and neither can the surrounding area. So I really feel there's a lot of impracticality about this particular proposition. I was, however, delighted to see that the painted windows, which were a disgrace, were going to be replaced by real windows. But on balance, I cannot support this particular application, sorry.
Thank you. Are there any last...? councillor Morgan.
Thank you, Chairman. This application does, in fact, tick a great many boxes, especially for me. The box that requires, and in fact, various governments in recent years have suggested that we should encourage the mixed use of developed areas for residential and shops and offices in order to preserve a balanced environment, and I certainly would approve that. Of course, it's always possible to sell almost any, well, can I say, you can sell anything if you drop the price down low enough. And what some members seem to be suggesting is that, well, if the owner makes these flats really very cheap, they can be sold off or rented out as office accommodation. I don't think that's a fair or valid argument. The council's estates and valuation manager does, in fact, make a very sensible and considered statement here. He, she considers that the agent has taken all reasonable steps to market the premises, but then indicates that perhaps they could have done it for a little longer, and in fact, they have. And that's a view that I would support. In order to justify it entirely, it might be necessary to continue that marking, marketing a little longer. But that's the only criticism I would have. I would come back to one final point, Chairman, and that is that whatever we decide here, it will be the planning inspector who makes the decision, and we should therefore attempt to guess what he would decide, and I have no doubt, I have no doubt that he would approve this application one hundred percent. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Have we come to the end of our comments or suggestions or remarks? Okay, so the revised recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to six and eight, as set out on pages seventy-nine to eighty-one, and informatives one to four on pages eighty-one and eighty-two of the agenda. And the revised condition seven... ooh, revision to condition six. Revised condition seven as shown on the update report, and condition six in relation to the bin store, Barry, you agreed that you could put an extra, excuse me, part to that, is that correct? Sorry. You don't want me to read that out again, do you? So may I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant permission? Excuse me. It's one in favour to grant. Those against? One abstention.
Thank you, Chairman. Taking on board what councillor Cable said, and councillor Morgan suggested the same, members may wish to defer to allow the applicant to continue marketing for a period of time and then to come back once that marketing's been fully exhausted. Thank you.
Can I ask whether or not the applicant could simply reapply, having done the additional marketing that might be sufficient to satisfy members?
Elizabeth.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. If you resolve to refuse permission, that is obviously an option to the applicant. They could consider the objections that the committee have raised, and seek to overcome them, and reapply with additional marketing information, and seek to address any of the other concerns. Of course, they also reserve the right to appeal against any refusal as well. Thank you, Chair.
So we need an alternative recommendation to defer or to refuse outright. Councillor Reynolds.
I would like to suggest we have an alternative recommendation, which is to refuse permission on the grounds of loss of employment premises, a lack of amenity space, and a lack of, well, sensible, reasonable marketing, but maybe councillor Taylor-Smith might want to beef that up, concerns, yes, a lack of parking provision on site as well. I mean, there is an issue, that the people are interested in buying this, but it's, we need to get the people to value it as what is a sensible commercial price for the property as an office. Unfortunately, if somebody wants to sell it as flats, it's obviously much more valuable than it is offices. But it's our duty as residents of Godleming to try and make sure that the commercial vibrancy of our town is protected as best we can.
Thank you. And councillor Taylor-Smith, did you have an alternative suggestion?
I'd be pleased to second that recommendation.
So we now have a recommendation to refuse. Elizabeth.
Chairman, if I could just summarise the reasons that I think, taking councillor Reynolds' summary points, and suggest some final wording for those reasons for refusal. I think the first reason could read, the proposal has failed to demonstrate that there is no need for this building to be retained for employment purposes, and consequently is contrary to policy IC two of the Waverley Borough Local Plan and paragraphs eighteen and nineteen of National Planning Policy Framework. A second reason could be that the proposal, by virtue of the loss of office space, would be harmful to the vitality and viability of the town centre, contrary to policies TC one and TC three of the Waverley Borough Local Plan and paragraph twenty-three of the MPPF. And then picking up the third point in respect of the concern about the parking, the proposal fails to provide adequate, dedicated, or usable, picking up councillor Lee's point about manoeuvrability, parking spaces, and consequently could give rise to additional on-street parking pressures and lead to inconvenience and a loss of amenity to other highway and town centre users. As such, the proposal will fail to comply with the Waverley Borough Council Parking Guidelines two thousand and thirteen and policy M fourteen of the Waverley Borough Local Plan. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Reynolds.
Is that mileage in picking up councillor Thompson's view about the lack of sort of amenities for bin storage and stuff like that?
If you want to add that on, thank you, Chairman, if you want to add that on, that is your judgement. I think possibly a planning inspector may say that that is something that could be achieved by condition, which is why we captured it the way we did. But if you feel fundamentally it can't be achieved because of your concerns about the layout, then it's still open for you to say that you feel that the layout would not allow it. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Taylor Smith.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for your suggestion. I think the one policy I didn't hear you mention was TC three.
Sorry, the first reason would have IC two in it, which is the industrial and commercial land. The second one would have TC one, TC three, which are the town centre policies. Thank you, Chairman.
So we now need to vote, I think, on a refusal based on the three reasons that Elizabeth has just presented to us, which were complicated. Yes, would you like to just repeat, so refusal on these reasons?
The first reason would be, the proposal has failed to demonstrate that there is no need for this building to be retained for employment purposes, and consequently is contrary to policy IC two of the Waverley Borough Local Plan and paragraphs eighteen and nineteen of the NPPF. Second reason, the proposal, by virtue of the loss of office space, would be harmful to the vitality and viability of the town centre, contrary to policies TC one and TC three of the Waverley Borough Local Plan two thousand and two, and paragraph twenty-three and twenty-three of the NPPF. And finally, the proposal fails to provide adequate, dedicated, or usable parking spaces, and consequently could give rise to additional on-street parking pressures and lead to inconvenience and a loss of amenity to other highway and town centre users. As such, the proposal will fail, would fail to comply with the Waverley Borough Council Parking Guidelines two thousand and thirteen and Waverley Borough Council, Waverley Borough Local Plan Policy M fourteen. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So that's what we're going to vote on now. So can we please show your votes? This is four, for refusal on those three.
Eleven in favour of refusing on those three grounds.
And those against refusal on those three grounds?
That's one.
And any abstentions? I think that's, everybody's voted now. Thank you very much. And so item nine on the agenda, exclusion of press and pub... Have I made my pronoun, have I made a pronouncement? Am I supposed to make it?
No.
No, I'm done. Okay. There are no items to consider in exempt, so that concludes the meeting this evening. Thank you, members.